Reconvene our meeting from May 10. Primary purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive our county manager's budget to discuss some of our fire department's rate increases. I think we also have a couple items of business, some budget amendments, and I would like to add one appointment to the agenda. We're going to add that as part of the meeting here.
And I do think, Mr. Chairman, I know you're not going to have a moment of silence or anything, but we do need to announce that this board does recognize the passing of Pay Sherman of this board, Miles Gregory, and the Pay's leadership. He's provided for this county in many ways, including the Macon County Airport, for certain. So I think condolences from this board with a card would be very important to that family.
Mr. Manager, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning it, Commissioner Bill. So if we can, with y'all's, Mr. Head and I will add an appointment under 5:00 A.M. Again, appreciate all y'all being here tonight for our discussions and hearing the county manager's budget. I know it's a very wet day. It was about floated down the mountain when it came down. In fact, it rained so hard in Highlands today that even my hair got wet. All right. Mr. Manager, you're up.
See, Paul, he's getting comfortable over there. I was going to tell you that, huh? Yeah. We, I was talking to my grandfather, and, you know, he's my role model. Those of you that know me, I've looked up to him my whole life. He's a Baptist preacher, priest for 60 years, preached the word of God. So we, after church last Sunday, we had a couple people come up and join the church and get saved there at the service and everything. And so we was eating after church, and he said, Derek, he said, I know you're nervous about this budget thing. He said, you get nervous every year. And he said, I've been thinking, you get up there and you talk too long. He said, now, I took those girls back here in that room after church. He said, it took me three minutes, and I told them how to get to heaven. He said, there ain't no reason that you should stand up there for 45 minutes explaining that budget. He said, people are going to go to sleep. People are going to want to get a pillow. And so I thought about it a second, and I said, well, Guy, I said, the only problem with that is the plan of salvation don't cost $59 million. So we chuckled about that, but in all seriousness, well, thank goodness, the plan of salvation is far more simple than government finances. But I say that to say, I'll try to get through this as quick as I can, and you're not the only one that's got on me about that. So at $59,47,113, the fiscal year '23 budget is going to increase by $2,365,895 over the fiscal '22 original budget. One thing I want us to recognize as we get started into this is the budget growth here in fiscal year '23 is a direct reflection of a growing Macon County and a booming economy here locally. During the pandemic, following the census in 2020, Macon County's continued to grow. Macon County's population since the census from 2020 through 2021 has grown by approximately 1.7%. If you compare this to growth in the southwestern region, that's about 0.9%. So we're well in excess of the growth we're seeing in the region. And of course, this growth has contributed to economic development and the booming economy. And if you look at any economic indicator that's out there for Macon County, you're going to see growth that we hadn't seen in over a decade. When you look at residential real estate sales here from 2019 through 2021 in the Highlands Cachers area, you'll see 113% increase in those residential real estate sales. When you look at the Franklin area here from 2019 through 2021, you're going to see a 64% increase in residential real estate sales. Same story with building permits. This graph here shows the five-year average from 2015 through 2019 in blue of the residential building permits that were issued. In that five-year time period, we averaged 98 permits a year. It's what we issued through the Building Inspections Department. That increased by 50% in 2021, as you see that number rise to 147%. Same thing with commercial development. Here in the five-year time span from 2015 through 2019, on average, we issued 45 commercial building permits a year. In 2020, that number goes three times that amount to 137 and tapers back off here in 2021 to 79 commercial building permits. One thing I do want to point out, that number 79 right there, while it is a decrease, the value associated with those 79 permits is approximately $56 million in fiscal year '21. The value associated with those 137 permits in fiscal year '20 was $10.6 million. So while you got fewer permits, you got more value out there, bigger projects out there. Retail sales, 30% increase from 2019 to 2021. Travel and tourism, here you see the occupancy tax collections. Nantahala, from 2019 to 2021, occupancy tax collections increased 197%. In Franklin, from 2019 to 2021, occupancy tax collections increased by 110%. In Highlands, from 2019 through 2021, occupancy tax collections increased 102%. So make no mistake that the growth in this budget is reflective of the current economic conditions. And while the budget will grow as a result of revenue increases, this growth in revenue is going to allow us to maintain our current ad valorem property tax rate of 40 cents per $100 of assessed value. How does that stack up in western North Carolina? The average tax rate in the seven county southwestern region that Macon County is in is 46 cents per $100 of assessed value. Statewide, you have an average property tax rate for counties that is 67 cents per $100 of assessed property value. So in maintaining our current tax rate, moving into fiscal year '23, we will be able to continue moving forward without requesting a tax increase. We're also going to maintain a solid financial position. A key indicator of that solid financial position's fund balance growth. We're anticipating fund balance to increase to end fiscal year '22 by about 10.6%. And not only is it a key, is fund balance a key indicator of our financial health, it's also a talking point among the county's finances for a lot of reasons. And that's because, you know, number one, it's grown so much during this pandemic. But the reason for this growth is there's simply some things that you can't budget for. And one of those things is a 33% increase in sales tax from the year 2019 through 2021. That's directly tied back to those residential sales that we just discussed in the private sector. There's no way that you can budget 33% growth for sales tax revenue over a two-year time span. That would simply be irresponsible. Same thing with ad valorem property tax. We looked at the building permits. We looked at the increase in real estate sales. What's happening in ad valorem property tax? Well, we're going to see growth in revenue there, although we're not raising the tax rate. What's happening is these real estate sales and these residential building permits, what does that telling us? Land's coming out of present use value. That land's being subdivided. Houses are being put on that land, and the land is being sold, leading to an increase in our property tax base. So ad valorem property tax, just like sales tax revenue, is a direct reflection of this economy. I can't emphasize that enough, and that is going to lead to revenue growth in the coming fiscal year. Combined with those two things, you have local governments, local school systems, local municipal governments that have continued to receive state and federal pandemic relief funding during the COVID-19 pandemic. In many instances, this funding offsets expenditures in the operating budget, which creates a revenue surplus at the end of the year that rolls in and contributes to a fund balance increase. So you have a combination of things across the state of North Carolina that's caused Macon County's fund balance to grow, but it's caused almost everybody's fund balance to grow across the state of North Carolina throughout the pandemic. Throughout the pandemic, fund balance growth has became the rule rather than the exception. Like fund balance, our debt-to-expenditures ratio is a key indicator of our financial health. Macon County has a debt service-to-expenditure ratio of 6.7%. That's considered very strong. At $29.8 million of outstanding debt in fiscal year '23, about 97% of that debt is attributable to capital projects in the Macon County school system. In the coming fiscal year, our principal and interest payment on the outstanding debt is going to increase by approximately $360,000. And that is because the first year of principal and interest together on the Macon Middle School renovation project will be coming online. So you can see that increase here, and then that increase taper back down. We always talk about our financial position. We always talk about, you know, Macon County's financially strong. But the best way that I could think to show you how that works in practice is when we go back to February of 2021 during the sale of $19.3 million of limited obligation bonds. When we went through that sale, Lori received two love letters here. One was from Moody's Investor Service, which gave us a credit rating of AA3. The next letter that Lori received in February was from S&amp;P Global Ratings. We received a credit rating of AA minces. What that did was, that credit rating combined for a AA2, which allowed us to, when we sold those $19.3 million worth of bonds, nine and a half million dollars of that was for construction of the Macon Middle School project. We received an interest rate of 1.9% for 20 years on that $9.5 million middle school renovation financing. The remainder of that was $9.8 million in debt that we were going to refinance. We received a 1.07% interest rate on the $9.8 million in debt we were refinancing for a 14-year term. What that translates into is $700,000 over that 14-year time period that the county saved because of that financial position. So that's how that financial position works in practice. Now, while we've looked at the budget as it stands, we know that that budget is a product of economic growth, and we know that budget allows us to maintain our tax rate. We know that budget allows us to maintain our solid financial position. Moving into the coming fiscal year, we're also aware that much uncertainty remains on the horizon. The economy of today is booming, but you saw a 1.45% decline in GDP, gross domestic product, in the first quarter of 2022. In March, the Bureau of Labor Statistics reported an 8.5% increase in the CPI. That is the largest increase in the Consumer Price Index that has been reported since 1981. The Federal Reserve in May approved a half a percentage point rate increase, as we're all aware, in an effort to mitigate the inflation that we're seeing today. They also have announced subsequently that there's going to be further actions taken by the Fed with these rate increases. And, you know, as we look at the first part of 2022, we're beginning to see maybe a little bit of that here. If you look at real estate sales in Highlands for the first three months of 2022 compared to the first three months of 2021, you see about a 37% decrease in those closings. When you look at real estate closings for the greater Franklin area, for the first three months of 2022 compared to the first three months of 2021, you're seeing about a 23% decrease. And this is not alarming. It's not alarming. The sales bounced back in March some, but it does show how quickly things can change. And we must remain aware of that as we move on into the coming fiscal year. Revenue projections within this fiscal year budget are going to, they're based on the current economic conditions. That's very important. These revenue projections are not based on anticipated future growth. They're based on the current economic conditions that we're seeing today. And what do I mean by that? Let's start with ad valorem tax. Ad valorem tax here, you can see, makes up the majority of revenue in the fiscal year '23 budget, as it always does. Ad valorem tax is our most consistent source of revenue. You're going to see an increase of about half a million dollars in ad valorem tax revenue in the coming fiscal year. That's due to two things. That's due to an increase in tax base of $110 million, going back to the building permit discussion and the real estate sales discussion that we had. You see that reflected right here in your ad valorem tax increase. So that growth in the tax base of $110 million, combined with an increase of 0.2% in the tax collection percentage, is going to result in that half a million dollar increase in ad valorem tax revenue. Motor vehicle tax, you're going to see growth there as well in the value of the motor vehicles that are in Macon County. That's what this source of revenue is based on. And it's self-explanatory. If anybody's been to a car dealership lately, you can attest to the fact that motor vehicle values have definitely increased. As we move on down the line here, I've highlighted some of the areas that I felt are most vulnerable in light of the economic uncertainty that we could potentially face in fiscal year '23. Number one being sales tax. At $1.6 million, sales tax growth is representative of about a 15.7% increase over what we budgeted in fiscal year '22. How did we arrive at that number? We took the actual first eight months of sales tax numbers that we received for fiscal year '22, and we compared that to fiscal year '21. So we budgeted that growth. We budgeted that eight months, we captured all that growth, and that is where that entire 15.7% increase comes from, is growth that has occurred. Again, we're basing this growth on the economy of today. Now, in a normal year, you're going to budget growth in sales tax to finish the year, and you're also going to put a growth factor on sales tax for the next fiscal year. Again, a very, a purposeful attempt to be very cautious with this sales tax revenue in light of the economic uncertainty out there, based on current growth, not future growth. Service fee revenue, $256,000 increase. Now, your service fee revenue in the operating budget, it includes your line items, it includes your register of deeds, your building inspections, your environmental health permits. All those things are grouped in to this service fee revenue category. But as we all know, those things are directly tied back to the economy. They're directly tied back to the economic uncertainty. So this $256,000 increase is purely a function of ambulance revenue increases. And ambulance revenue increases, we had from 2019 through 2021, there was a 16% increase in calls for service to our EMS. That is the reason that you're seeing this continual increase in service calls is leading to an increase in budgeted revenue for EMS. But that makes up the entirety of that increase. There is none of that increase that is made up on an uncertain future. Just want to point that out. Intergovernmental revenues, they are what they are. These intergovernmental revenues are pass-through monies from the state and federal government. It's like your PILT money. Where at $9 million is what it accounts for in the operating budget. That is mainly, you're going to see that in your human services function, your health department, your social services. That is funds that are coming intergovernmentally from another governmental agency, passing down to the human services function. You're going to see a decrease here in the miscellaneous revenue item. Now, the miscellaneous revenue item is going to decrease because in 2022, if you'll recall, in this fiscal year will be the completion of the second phase of this internet expansion, broadband internet expansion in southern Macon County. We entered into a two-year agreement with Bossom West, $580,000 total, broken out into two fiscal years. Once that line becomes live and they have service provided to the Auto and Scaly Mountain Community Centers, this payment will be distributed. We're hoping that is going to occur in this fiscal year. They're like everything else, they're experiencing some delays right now in that project due to supply chain and other things, but we're hopeful that's going to get wrapped up. So that $290,000 that we appropriated in fiscal '22 is going away, and therefore, you're going to see a $292,000 decrease in this miscellaneous revenues item. So that, briefly, is where we get to the $2.365 million revenue increase in fiscal year '23. As we've mentioned, the booming economy of today has led to an increase in revenue. But the same economy of today is going to continue to present challenges as we head into the coming fiscal year. Now, these challenges are going to include the same challenges that you face in your businesses, rising costs, supply chain complications, increased competition to recruit and retain high-performing employees. In fiscal year '23, the budgeted, at the budgeted level of expenditures, we'll be able to address each of these challenges while continuing to make improvements inside and outside the organization. So as we look at the expenditures by function, and this chart is included in your budget book there, again, expenditures are going to increase by $2.365 million in the coming fiscal year. And this pie chart shows how these expenditures are distributed by function. As you'll see, public safety, human services, and education account for approximately 75% of expenditures in the general fund budget. One more thing I want you to remember here, on this slide, we'll come back to it, is the $1.7 million in non-departmental. As my grandmother would say, hang that on your right ear. Now that we've looked at the expenditures by function, I'd like to take a little bit closer look at the expenditures by category, particularly focusing on the increases and decreases from the prior fiscal year. When I'm talking about expenditures by category, when you look at this organization, there's three types of expenditures. You got employee salary and benefits, non-salary and benefit-related operating cost, and capital expenditures. Employee salary and benefits cost, out of that $59,47,113 that is the fiscal year '23 budget, employee salary and benefit costs account for $30,100,000 of that. Now, that is an increase of $3.8 million over fiscal year 2022. This increase does include the implementation of the pay study from fiscal year '22. That will result in a $2.6 million full year impact to the fiscal year '23 budget. And I can say with certainty that implementation of this study in November of 2021 was a home run for this organization. Following implementation of that study, we saw vacancies across the organization decline by 4%. This is approximately 15 full-time positions, and these vacancies are filled within that critical public safety function that so many people rely on. In addition to improving our recruitment efforts, it's improved our ability to be able to retain qualified employees, and it has also improved employee morale. So we definitely hit the mark in fiscal year '22 with implementing that pay study. Now, that $1.7 million in non-departmental, the reason I wanted you to remember it is because in 2022, at the time we adopted the original budget in fiscal year 2022, that non-departmental line item was $3,985,000. So when we passed the original budget, we were still working on the pay study. It would not be completed until November. And as it would not be completed until November, we, when we passed the budget, we had to have somewhere to put that revenue that was going to be associated, or to put that, to record that expenditure that was going to be associated with the pay study. We put that in the non-departmental function of the budget. So that's why that non-departmental was 3.9 million. You had that 2.6 million as we started fiscal year 2022 that was sitting as one lump sum expenditure in that non-departmental function. What happened when we passed the pay study was that expenditure was broken apart and put in each department, each function of the budget, in a representative amount to fund that portion of the budget's pay study. So whatever went to public safety, that came out of that single expenditure, went to public safety, went into general government, went into transportation. So the expenditure didn't go away, but the revenue was there to support it. And the reason I say that is because the $2.6 million pay study implementation is not included in the $2.365 million budget increase from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23, because both the expenditure and the offsetting revenue for that expenditure was included in the fiscal year '22 budget. It's the same expenditure, it's just been broken out and put in all the different functions. So while you will see that increase within each function, you're not going to see an increase in the bottom-line budget, because it's the same expenditure, it's just broken apart across different departments. But we will highlight the impact of each function, that the pay study made on each function. But I just wanted to make that point before we get started, because you're looking at this and saying, well, the budget grew by, the budget increased by 2.3 million, but you had a $2.6 million pay study. Well, that's because at the time we passed the fiscal year '22 original budget, we included the pay study expenditure and the revenue for the pay study. Now, it's just that expenditure's been divvied out across those functions. So while, so I want you to remember that, and we'll discuss that. Does anybody have any questions about that right now, before we go on any further? Or is that pretty? I've tried, thought about it as much as I could, but you need to explain it, you need to understand that before we move forward. Following implementation of the pay study, many of you have heard the old saying, a rising tide lifts all boats. Following implementation of the pay study, the tides continued to rise. The record economic growth that we've talked about has continued to create an extremely lucrative and an extremely competitive private sector. It has also, it's forced government agencies like Macon County to implement pay studies and to continue making steps forward to ensure that they remain competitive. When you look across the state of North Carolina for fiscal year '23, the North Carolina League of Municipalities' anticipated cost of living and merit increase survey reported the statewide average cost of living adjustment to be 4.7%, with merit increases ranging from 1.8% to 3.7%. There was a survey conducted by the Western North Carolina Managers Association cited the average increase would be 6% for those agencies responding to the survey in western North Carolina for fiscal year '23. The Southwestern Commission Council of Governments, that council of governments that works with all seven of our western North Carolina counties, had informed Macon County they would be administering a 6% cost of living adjustment to their employees. That is part of a statewide effort across all council of governments to, you'll see an average increase across all those council of governments in the state, averages 6.29%. So here, the fiscal year '23 budget proposes a 3% cost of living adjustment and a one-step increase within the pay scale for all full-time employees. The 3% cost of living adjustment will apply to full-time and part-time employees. The one-step increase applies to full-time employees. So what this is going to enable Macon County to do is continue to rise with the tide as we move on into the fiscal year. In addition to that, you will see an increase in the salary and benefit costs within all these functions due to an increase in retirement system contribution. This is out of our hands. This is a mandatory increase to the state retirement system, and that's going to result in about $146,000 increase to your retirement line items across all budget functions. Pleased to say that health insurance remains flat this year. We continue to enjoy a positive experience since we've moved to the North Carolina Health Insurance Risk Pool. And so moving into fiscal year '23, employee contributions to health insurance will remain flat. So we've talked about salary and benefits at $30 million. Now, let's look at the non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures, and these are representative within all budget functions of the tools that we need to do the job that we do, to conduct the day-to-day operations of this organization. That's everything from your contracted services, your printer supplies, whether it be in HR, your toilet paper, soap, and maintenance budget, your ammunition in the public safety function, medical supplies in the public safety function, construction supplies with building and grounds. This group of expenditures, these non-salary and benefit-related operating costs, account for $12.6 million in the fiscal year '23 operating budget. That is a decrease of $229,000 from fiscal year '22. One thing I want to point out here is that while this is an overall decrease in this category of expenditures, you've got to remember, number one, the contracted service that was budgeted in the governing board. That was where that $290,000 was for the Bossom West expansion project that we completed Phase Two of in this fiscal year. So that was recorded as an expenditure in the operating budget in fiscal year '22. We've already talked about the revenue for that went away. We've already talked about the revenue for that went away, so did the expenditure. So while your expenditures are down, the, the expenditure, especially in the governing board, the 290,000 for the internet project, both expenditure and revenue went away. In the health department, we're going to see an instance in a second within the human services function where you had $640,000 of expenditures roll off, but you had $640,000 of grant revenue roll off as well. So all the expenditures that decreased had accompanying revenue sources. So I don't want this overall decrease in non-salary and benefit-related operating cost to, to overshadow the fact that we're making organizational improvements within this category of expenditures in the coming fiscal year. We're also dealing with the challenges that we spoke of earlier, with the increased cost, with the increased demand for services, with supply chain issues and, and economic uncertainty. So I want to, don't want the reduction to overshadow that fact. Capital expenditures within the operating budget. Capital expenditures are those expenditures that are greater than $5,000 and have a useful life of one year or more. Here you can see fiscal year 23, we have a significant increase in capital expenditures. It's going to account for about 4.1 million in the fiscal year 23 operating budget. That's about a $1.2 million increase in capital expenditures from fiscal year 22. Here in blue, you can see the county's pay-as-you-go capital expenditures. What that is, is capital expenditures that we need, similar to those non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures, to conduct the business of our day-to-day organization. But rather than talking about printer paper and supplies, now we're talking about vehicles. We're talking about equipment, we're talking about ambulances, patrol vehicles, tax office vehicles to, to go out and do the job. We're talking about that kind of expenditure now. And our capital improvement plan, which was adopted in 2019, 2018 I believe, sets the threshold for the county's pay-as-you-go capital expenditures, the stuff we're discussing at 1.3 million. Now, as you can see, the county stays pretty close to that 1.3 million since 2018, and that's for a good reason. That's because that is built into our capital improvement plan, which has the capital reserve fund in it. And when we stay within this level of expenditures, it allows, it makes sure that we're able to continue funding the schools' annual capital needs, it makes sure that we're continuing to build capacity within that capital reserve fund to finance future projects. So, you know, this is a very, this is a targeted approach, and we remain disciplined with respect to capital spending, staying within those parameters that are established by the capital improvement plan. The $882,000 increase here in grant funding of this, this is about a $400,000 increase over fiscal year 22 in grant-funded capital expenditures. And that is increasing due to, we will be moving forward with the project previously approved by this board. It's the construction of the addition and awning at the transit facility. And then we will discuss that capital project in, in greater detail later in the presentation. Lastly, you will see in yellow, the school systems' capital funding. An additional $819,381 has been included in the fiscal year 23 budget that is representative of a transfer to Fund 46, which is the Franklin High School Project Fund for continued design and planning work at the Franklin High School Project. So that is in addition to the $1,150,000 annual capital outlay we provided to the schools and is reflected in that yellow bar of the capital expenditures in fiscal year 23. So now let's take a look at how these expenditure, different expenditure categories, how they line up across each budget function. Here you have public safety. Public safety includes the sheriff's department, courthouse security, forest service, jail, planning permitting and development, emergency medical services, emergency management, fire, and animal control. 17.7 million, or 30% of the operating budget, goes into public safety. This is representative of a $2.5 million increase over fiscal year 2022. What's included in this increase is the $1.6 million implementation of the pay study in fiscal year 2022, the recommended step and cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 23, also our mandatory increase to the retirement system, you'll see total there, and miscellaneous changes. All these miscellaneous, what are miscellaneous changes? Miscellaneous changes are changes that have occurred to the salary and benefits outside of pay study implementation and outside of the recommended increases in fiscal year 23. What's an example of that? Let's take EMS for example. If you have, if you have a position that, I'm taking EMS because we've had, we saw a lot of vacancies there. So if that, if there was a vacancy in EMS, we have, the county budgets health insurance, we budget family coverage level for that vacant position. That's a huge swing compared to what we budget for individual health insurance. So when that position is filled, if somebody fills that position and doesn't take family health insurance, they take single-coverage health insurance, and that's going to result in a decrease to that benefit, which is going to be a decrease in this miscellaneous change. Conversely, if you have somebody that has family insurance, and they leave, they retire, and then you've got somebody that fills that, that, that has single insurance, that's going to result in a decrease. So you can see, it, it works both ways, but the, the miscellaneous changes have to do with changes in benefits that are outside of the scope of the pay study and that are outside of the proposed increases for fiscal year 23. So that's going to account for about 516,000 in the public safety function in the coming fiscal year. And the chart over here to the right includes, as you can see, your salary and benefits, your non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures. So 14 million of that 30 million that we discussed in salaries and benefits is right here in public safety. The 12.6 million in non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures, 3 million of that is in public safety. And then our capital at 4.1 million, 567 of that is here in public safety. So I wanted kind of to take you back around and show you how those expenditure categories apply within these individual functions. So you're going to have about a half a million dollar increase in fiscal year 23 with that pay study. That's about 2.1 of that is going to be in salary benefits. In your non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures, you're going to see an increase of $400,000 in the public safety function. And what is that doing? Well, at $400,000, we're going to make some organizational improvements. We're also going to deal, you'll, you'll see directly how we deal with challenges in the operating budget. Here, gasoline within, you're talking about EMS, you're talking about sheriff's department, emergency management, you're talking about all those departments within this function. See about a 17% increase in gasoline. That's not only due to increased price, that's due to increased call volume. Combined between the sheriff's department and EMS, we've seen a combined 20% increase in calls for service from 2019 through 2021. So that's reflected there. Similar with utilities, you'll see an increase in utilities. I'm not going to go down every one of these, so don't be, don't be worried. Inmate care, there's another one, out of our control. That's seven, inmate care accounts for 721,000 of those $3 million in non-salary and benefit operating expenditures in this function. That's going to increase by $66,000, and that's due to increase in medical supplies and having more inmates in the jail, an increase in our food service trends. We're going to make organizational improvements as well. One, one item here, you see the contracted services. So within the public safety function, contracted services account for about $454,000. So that is representative of a $102,000 increase over the current fiscal year. And not only have we seen unavoidable increases in contracted services, you'll see some of those in EMS with things like stretcher maintenance, with our power-load stretchers, those maintenance contracts are coming, are coming due. So that's going to increase your contracted services line items in EMS. You're also going to see maintenance on the 911 CAD system that is, that was previously covered through 911 funds. 911 board informed us that they're no longer covering that, so that's going to result in an increase in expenditures in, within your EMS category. But there's other things, like in planning permitting and development, we're going to move forward with the contract, the project manager position that we started this year with Macon County. That's going to be a $36,000 increase to that contracted services line there in building inspections. What that is, is a project manager that comes and oversees all the projects that Macon County's got going on. And with the middle school renovation, that's been a full-time job. With projects we're currently discussing, those projects that are coming down the pipe, it is very important that Macon County has eyes and ears on that job site to, to keep us in the loop on what's going on, on a daily basis, because we're talking about millions of dollars with the projects. Not only does that project manager serve as the eyes and ears, that project manager can perform all the inspections at that project. That project manager performs all the inspections on our major commercial projects that are currently ongoing. You know, the New Engels, the, the fast food restaurants that we see going up. And what that does is it allows our building inspections department, you know, for, for the cost of that project manager, not only is the county getting this benefit of having our project, of having somebody to look over our projects, we're getting the benefit of those inspections, and that reduces the burden on a hammered building inspections department. We've seen that by the building permits, we're busier than we've ever been. So it allows us to do that also. The project manager position provides all the continuing education for our building inspectors. So for that increase in, in planning permitting and development, we're getting a very good deal at half the price of what we could get a building inspector for. So, but that's just one example of how we're making some improvements within this category Capital expenditures, as we saw there in, in the graph, will account for about 567,000 of expenditures in the public safety function. This is an $83,000 decrease from fiscal year 2022, and you will see here that the decrease is attributable to a reduction in the sheriff's department and a reduction in the jail and law enforcement department within this function. What happened there? Supply chain issues, as we saw in the current fiscal year. We budget, we try to replace about four patrol vehicles every year. In fiscal year 2022, we had this budgeted, but we were informed by, in March, by the manufacturer, that they were canceling our contract and they were not making any more new cars until after January of 2023. So at that point, sheriff was able to locate inventory, and we purchased not only that FY22 supply of vehicles, but we purchased the four that we would have gotten in this budget as well, due to the fact that they just wouldn't be available. So in addition to that, we completed a plumbing fixture replacement in the jail. That was a $157,000 project that was completed in fiscal year 2022, so that's going to, that's going to roll off of your capital expenditures as well, and that's what's contributing to this overall reduction in capital expenditures. But while the spotlight is off of the sheriff and, and the jail, it, we will be able to focus more attention on our emergency medical services. And what that will lead to in this fiscal year is our ability to move forward with two ambulance remounts and, and the purchase of the accompanying medical equipment. So generally, we have in our capital improvement plan, Warren has it staggered, we'll do, we'll purchase a new ambulance, then a refurb ambulance, new ambulance and refurbished ambulance. And that's how it's staggered in the capital improvement plan. This year, we're able to make headway by going ahead and, and purchasing two ambulances within the emergency medical services function. Department, excuse me. When we look at the general government function, general government function is going to include your service provision departments. Service provision departments are departments like Board of Elections, Register of Deeds, your tax assessment, tax supervision, mapping office. Those are the departments within the general government function that are providing services directly to the public. You also have administrative support departments like administration, legal, finance, human resources, information technology, garage, and building and grounds that play a support role not only to the other departments within this function, but the departments across the whole organization. What you're going to see here in fiscal year 2022 at 8.2 million, that's about a $471,000 increase over fiscal year 22. For fiscal year 23, that's inclusive, of course, of the pay study implementation as well as the proposed increases in salaries and benefits for fiscal year 23. And you're going to see a reduction in non-salary and benefit-related operating cost, as we discussed earlier, within this function is where that appropriation for the Balsam West project was. It's no longer going to be there, so that's what's leading to this decrease. We're also going to see a decrease in capital expenditures as well, here at $241,000 in the coming fiscal year.
Can you take a break?
Within your, within your operating expenditures, you're going to see a, the decrease here in contracted services, of course, due to that Balsam West second payment. But I don't, I do not want this to overshadow, you will also, you will see an increase in your depart, in your information technology department within contracted services, about $47,000, and that's attributable to a new web development platform that we're going to be moving forward with in fiscal year 23. This will be an interactive, it, it's going to bring our website into the 21st century, if you will, make it more user, make it more user-friendly and, and give a better experience to the end user. Here, also within these non-salary and benefit operating expenditures, you see increases in printing and postage within the tax office. This is attributable to increased demand. You will, in a reval year, revaluation's coming up January, so that is going to increase your printing, your postage, all those line items. In the, in the reval year, you, if you look back in the trends, that's what happens in the tax office. So that's increased demand. You see here your utilities, similar to what we discussed in public safety, cost increases there as well. With capital, although that's going to decline by $62,000, we are going to continue improving upon the services we provide. The tax office will be purchasing a change finder software. That's $36,500, and that software accompanies our pictometry. If you'll remember, the county has paid for two pictometry flights, one in 2017, one in 2021. What this change finder software does is it works with those flights and takes the imagery from those flights and allows that appraiser to sit there and see, it points out all the changes that have occurred within a structure on a parcel. So we've got 44,000 pieces of parcels in Macon County. With this one program, they can go, and, and this, this computer program, the change finder picks up the changes in that orthogonal aerial imagery from 2017 to 2021. So not only is that, not only does that lead to efficiency, that's going to lead to cost savings in the future, because now that appraiser can do all this stuff from the desk rather than have to actually go out and, and inspect each and every site. We can pick up changes sitting right there in the office. So with that, just another example of how we're using capital expenditures to improve our service within the general government function. Transportation at 2.2 million of the operating budget. I, I do not want to, although this, although transit accounts for 2.2 million in the operating budget, only $454,000 of that 2.2 million is representative of county-funded expenditures. Here you can see a $719,000 increase over the current fiscal year, 77,900 attributable to the pay study, 31,000 attributable to increases proposed in salaries and benefits for fiscal year 23, and you had an increase of 97,500 in non-salary and benefit-related operating costs. One point I want to make is that of that 97,555 in non-salary and benefit-related operating cost, 82,500 of that is offset through CARES Act grant funding. Capital expenditures here, you see make up a large portion of that transit budget, and that is representative of the $1,076,000 addition that we will be moving forward with in fiscal year 23. The county is only responsible for 20%, approximately $194,000 of that $1 million expenditure. Economic, economic and fiscal development, this function of the budget includes your economic development, Cowie School, soil conservation, and cooperative extension. As you can see here, it accounts for $641,303 in the coming fiscal year. That's a $65,600 increase, 13,800 of which attributable to pay study, another 53,3 proposed salary and benefit increases in, in fiscal year 23. You had a reduction in your non-salary and benefit operating of 25,214. As you can see here in your chart, non-salary and benefit-related operating expenditures account for $157,216. That reduction of $25,000 is due to the Nick Wasi Initiative payment rolling off in fiscal year 23. year '23. Capital expenditures will increase to $50,000. That's a $37,500 increase over the current fiscal year, and that is due to a replacement of the roof of the Cowie School and Cowie Gymnasium that has been put in the fiscal year '23 budget. Human services, 13 point, or 13,990,000 in the operating budget. Only 5.5 million, however, of this is representative of county funding. As, as we've talked about before, that $9 million in intergovernmental revenue, that's, this is where that comes into play in the human services budget, because you got a 15, or $13 million function here, only five, about five and a half of that is county-funded expenditures. You'll see here, the increase in the coming fiscal year, $75,728 total increase, but you had a $317,000 impact from the pay study, and you have a $358,782 impact from the proposed FY23 increases. One thing I wanna bring your attention to in the miscellaneous changes column, this does include the reinstatement of administrative officer three position in the health department in population health, as well as two part-time environmental health technicians. What the technicians in environmental health are going to do, we're going to continue throwing everything we have at this environmental health backlog in the coming fiscal year. That includes keeping money in contracted services to pay people to come in from outside and contract these inspections out, along with the full-time individuals that we have doing it. And it also includes the part-time environmental technician positions, which will go out to each site beforehand, do all the site prep, so those environmental health specialists can come onsite, do the inspection, and move on to the next one. All this in an attempt to continue working to reduce that backlog there in environmental health. You had a decrease in operating, in non-salary and benefit operating cost of $640,000. It's like I told you about earlier, that is all grant-funded expenditures that are going away. So while the expenditure's going away, the revenue's going away with it. $108,373 increase in capital. That will be the capital amount for fiscal year '23, and that includes replacement of two vehicles in onsite wastewater and one vehicle in private drinking water wells. You know, the backlog tells it all, the number of permits out there tell it all. These vehicles are running themselves to death right now. We have to make sure that we continue replacing and making sure that those vehicles are capable, allowing us to continue providing services. In the recreation and culture function, that's $3 million of the fiscal year '23 operating budget. That's, it's about 167,700 or a 5.8% increase over fiscal year 2022. As you'll see here, of that increase, pay study implementation accounted for 69,400 of it. Your FY23 proposed increases to salary and benefits here account for 83,900 of it. Non-salary and benefit operating is gonna increase by $85,375 over the current fiscal year, and capital is gonna stay about the same at $155,000. The increase in operating, non-salary and benefit operating expenditures is primarily due to an increase in funding to the Macon County Library of $52,470. You're also gonna see an increase in your contracted services in, within the recreation department. That is because in fiscal year '23, we will be moving toward beginning to outsource a lot of the mowing at our recreation complexes. So this contract that we'll be incorporating into the fiscal year '23 budget is going to be a contract for the mowing at the Robert C Carpenter Building Complex. Moving forward, we hope to continue taking advantage of these contracting opportunities in things like mowing, to be able to phase out operating costs, especially within that salary and benefit line item there. At 155,000 capital expenditures, that is for the construction of a six-court pickleball complex. Recreation department, this, this came as a recommendation from our recreation department. They've been in consultation with the Town of Highlands, who recently completed a pickleball complex to get pricing information, and they're currently evaluating multiple locations to locate this complex. But right now, we're leaving that budget at 155,000 in the coming fiscal year. Lastly, education. Macon County Schools requested a flat operating budget for fiscal year '23. That has been included here in the fiscal year '23 recommended budget, as well as the annual capital outlay and the transfer for continued planning at Franklin High School project, which we discussed. Also, similar to the Board of, or similar to Macon County Schools, we have left Southwestern Community College operating expenditures at 289,000. That is at the current year level. So in summary, what we've been able to do, salaries and benefits, we're gonna bring it all back together, and then we're done. Salaries and benefits increased by $3.8 million. 2.6 million of that increase was due to implementation of the pay study. Implementation of that pay study is not gonna be reflected in the bottom line, because you see that $2.4 million reduction in non-departmental. But it is, however, reflected within each one of your functions. Capital expenditures at 446,000, that is an increase to county-funded, or that is an increase to capital expenditures within this organization. As we discussed, that increase is all offset by an increase in grant revenue. So essentially, capital expenditures within the organization, as far as county funding goes, remain the same. The grant funding is what created the increase. Capital funding to the Macon County Schools will increase by 118, or by $819,000 in the coming fiscal year, as we discussed, that transferred to Fund 46. And with that, that's your $59,000, $59,47,000 in expenditures, your $2.3 million increase. That is what we have discussed by function. The revenue to support that has been generated through econo, through revenue projections that are based on the economic conditions of today, not on economic uncertainty of tomorrow. So while these expenditures have increased, the revenue that will offset these expenditures is reliable, consistent, and no matter, Macon County, with the fiscal year '23 budget, puts us in a position to be able to largely insulate ourselves from much of this economic uncertainty in the coming fiscal year. We'll continue providing a high level of service, maintain our solid financial position, remain competitive, and we'll have no increase to the abnormal tax rate. So with that, that concludes. I know that was a lot, and I tried to move through it as quick as I could. I'm happy to ask any questions.
Those last two sheets you threw up there, they're not in your budget message.
Which one?
Go back.
Yeah, they're, I can, I can print them out for you. It talks about it in there. They're, they're in there. It's just probably in a different format.
Okay.
But I can get you, I can print you this.
Yeah, the last one was a Southwestern Community College, and then this, I followed that. Okay, it's back, I, I've not, obviously not had time.
Right, right, certainly. And, and like I say, you know, lot going on, but if any questions, when we schedule our work session, if we could get, you know, any questions you have, anything you need clarification on, if you could get those questions, or we're not, we can have them ready, ready for you at the next meeting, whenever that.
Derek, while you're there, can you just roll back to the education, where it was kept flat?
Yeah.
Education slide. Thank you. That's, I just need the numbers. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, that's no mention reflection of CARES Act for COVID money.
No, it won't be reflected in the general fund budget. Now, education, they did receive COVID funding, like Macon County has received COVID funding. You know, and Dr. Baldwin can certainly speak to that better than I can, but that, you know, as of now, I think they're, they're planning on using some COVID in the coming fiscal year for capital, and they did, like Macon County, we premium pay, things like that, increased pay to employees. That's what a lot of organizations are doing right now with that COVID money.
We'll get to read this before we vote on it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sessions, whatever you wanna do.
Just roll one thing.
Yes, sir.
One thing, Dr. Baldwin said here, we had our school board meeting the other night, and I think the school board has done an excellent job in using their asset funds, and it didn't roll over into our capital problems. And I see here these Franklin Elementary School sixth classroom, you're picking up there.
We hope that we wind up being sixth classroom. We budgeted $3.75 million, and that, our tax limit is maybe around five classrooms, but we're hoping.
I see you're making middle school irrigation, you all picking that up. I see your Hollow Valley geothermal, you're picking that up, and that inhaler sewage treatment. And I believe that's a package of about $4 million that's on the school, but it's not conveyed over to the county.
Yeah, that's correct.
Appreciate you, appreciate you.
Any further questions for our manager?
Good job.
Good job as usual, Derek.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Happy to take that backpack off for a little while?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't forget your water.
A lot of work went into that, I know. Lord, thank you too. I know you're.
And the one that makes Derek look good.
That's right. You got that right, God. So thank you, Lord. Did a good job.
Did a good job.
All right, presentation of some volunteer fire departments representatives regarding proposed service free increases. Burnington, all of us first. Mike and Mike.
Welcome, guys.
Hello again.
Mr. Jackson, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, first off, I'd like to say thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to present our case. There's several reasons we're requesting an increase. I'm gonna touch on some of those and turn it over to Chief Schuler to talk more about some of the operations side. But basically, with the exception of a $5,000 incentive bonus we received a few years back for achieving an ISO rating of five versus our former nine S, we really haven't had a substantial increase in the past six years. This being said, you know, as Derek mentioned, the county's growing, our communities are growing, they, they have grown and continue to grow. Of course, the millage rates are adjusted to keep our tax revenue funding at the same flat rate it's been for a number of years. And with that, it's part of our request for an increase. Our main station, for instance, is now 43 years old, and it is in need of several upgrades. One of those, we're currently working with soil and water on a 75, 25 grant to address an erosion issue that we have along the creek next to our department there. With that, the project right now is, it's, it's being quoted, but we don't expect it to exceed $45,000. 25% of that will be our responsibility. So with, with that improvement, we're looking at 11 to 12 grand coming out of our department funds. And then, of course, the building itself is in need of some repairs. We're in the process of collecting bids for roof repairs, as well as basically an upgrade to the facade of that building. It's a metal building, like I said, 43 years old. We've gotten one, one estimate came in already, right around $26,000 to address the issues that we have with the roof, as well as looking at putting some new siding, and we'll also look at replacing a couple windows on the front side of that station. We also just recently had a failure of our HVAC AC system there, which was gonna require a new, new heat pump that we'll probably be looking somewhere around seven grand, 7,500 to get that taken care of. And, you know, looking at some other issues, the, the plumbing, we've got some minor issues there that need to be addressed within the next year or two. And we, we just recently updated the lighting in the bays. We converted everything over to LEDs in an attempt to, you know, lower ongoing costs in the future. But, you know, with, with those types of things, along with the rising fuel costs that we're all facing, and escalating utilities, the need for updating personal protective equipment for our volunteers, we've, Michael touched more on that, but in order for us to remain compliant with ISO, right now, our budget is stretched quite thin, and we feel it's time for an increase in order for us to make the changes that are needed within our facility. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Chief Schuler to touch a little bit more on some of the operations issues that we're facing.
I'll get on the more side of the operations side of the house. I know that he's got the packet I turned in. Like Mike said, the last budget increase was received in 2016, and then we received the, the $5,000 one, I believe, in 2018, 2017. Basically, what I'm asking for is about a $118,000 increase. I know it sounds like a lot, but our millage rate right now is .1056. I'm asking for an increase to .1596. If you take a $350,000 house, by the old millage rate, the fire tax was anywhere between $40 to $50 on it. By the new millage rate, it would increase by about $18.90. I know that's gonna be a lot to some people. The numbers I've got from the, the Macon County Mapping Department and U.S. Census Bureau that was gathered from March 9th of 2022, population in our area has increased from about 1,596 people to 2,248 people in a matter of a year. Our structures, there were 739 structures as of March 9th, 2021. That's increased to 1,038 structures by March 9th of this year. That's an increase of 299 structures so far, and that's not including the housing development going on in Middle Burnington, which they're building on right now. Of course, call volumes went up 25%. Medical supplies have went up. We carry EpiPens. I think we're one of the only departments in Macon County that carries EpiPens. They run us about $725 for one dose. We have to carry two adults and two children due to the extended area we have, way, and it takes the med unit or the ambulance 10 to 15 minutes to get to Upper Burnington or Ray Creek or something like that. The dose usually wears off anywhere five to seven minutes, so it usually takes two doses to cover until the ambulance gets there. Narcan, Narcan two years ago was $70 a dose that we were paying. It's up to $93 a dose this year. Of course, fuel prices have went up. We've got our own fuel tank at the firehouse. Two years ago, we were paying $3.20 a gallon for diesel, and that's on the county contract. We filled our tank up April 1st, and it was $4.91 a gallon then, and it's also jumped to $5.25 a gallon this month when they've come and filled it up. Of course, oil and filter changes on the trucks have went up. Average engine was $610 to get the oil changed, filters and all that. This year, it's over $860 to get the oil changed, filters, tires rotated and all that new stuff. And of course, along that, working comps went up, life insurance has went up, and the insurance we have to carry, file the service to the county has went up also. We've got more members on the roster. We've got 27 volunteers and two juniors. With that, we have to buy more equipment, more bunker gear, turnout gear. I have to replace five sets this year, because they're only good for 10 years at a time. They have an expiration date on them to stay compliant with NFPA. With that, air packs, I've gotta buy four more air packs, because four of my air packs come out of service this year. They've reached their life cycle and have to be replaced. We also have been provided with a generous donation last August from one of the housing developments in Burnington, that we had the part-timers work on. that we had the part timers work on weekends. We didn't pay them much, it was Saturday and Sunday. We paid them about $65 a day. That money's also running out. The community loves somebody being at the firehouse on Saturdays and Sundays. We've got a lot of foot traffic in there. So, of course, some of the increase or line item increase for that is part time pay to be able to continue to employ the part timers on Saturday and Sundays. Another thing, off the record, I heard from Raleigh. When I called down there, we depended a lot on the 50-50 grant, which is a grant we apply to every year. The state picks up 50%, we pick up the other 50%. Within the last two years, Raleigh has cut the limit to that. If your budget is above $230,000, you do not get that grant. Of course, our budget is 237,000. We haven't received a grant in the last two, two years. So that's the reason we can't get equipment replaced on a match grant from the state. And as it says in my letter, I'm a taxpayer. I live in the community. I don't take asking for a budget increase lightly. But we are expected to keep accomplishing our mission on a six-year-old budget in a day's world where everything is doubled, tripled in price. I will say this, we did have a public meeting before we turned the budget in, and everyone who's come to that public meeting had no idea that a lot of fire equipment has a lifespan of 10 years to 15 years and how little we operate on budget-wise. They believe a lot of their property tax they pay, about 70, 80% of that is for the fire service EMS. A lot of them shook their heads and couldn't believe that we operate on $230,000 with the fire tax that we get. Do you have any questions or anything I can answer for you?
I do think, Mike, Chief Schuler, it'd be important to remind this board and everybody your proximity to Macon County Airport.
We've got a old road that runs from the, right outside the bays, directly onto the runway. With the gate right there, we have a combination for it.
And it is not in your?
We cover half, we cover to the middle of the runway. The rest of it is in Franklin's district.
But it's still, the response time for you would be minimal?
Correct, yes.
And that's a big deal?
Yes, it is. With that in mind, the newer used truck we purchased with the selling of our two old trucks, it's got a cash system on it with a 2,000 gallon per minute pump on it for airport and stuff like that. So it's all set up and ready to go, just in case something does happen at the airport. They help Franklin out, so.
Mike.
Yo.
So, I'm going to say this to all the departments who are here. Being a commissioner in this position and talking about rate increases, it's not easy because we're appreciative of what all y'all do for our communities, and we're all grateful. However, we also have to ask difficult questions to make sure the decisions that we make are what's best for what we think for the, your constituents in your districts as well as ours.
Correct.
Please don't think, take anything that we say up here personally or to heart.
Oh, no.
We're just asking, asking good questions. With that, go ahead, I've got questions too.
No, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just trying to denounce everybody, I'm just trying to set the stage.
Right, that is privileges.
Mike or Mike, I'm not sure which one wants to answer. Did y'all take into consideration when you're running your budget, the $5.2 million increase in property values that you're expecting?
No, we were not aware we were getting a property value increase. But even with the increase, our fire tax stays the same. So in other words, it'll.
Your tax stays the same.
Right.
If your property values go up, you're gaining that fire tax on that extra money. So that's an extra chunk of income that you should get for this company. Am I saying that correct, Lord? I'm showing a $5.2 million increase?
I'm not sure.
From '22 over '21?
Warren and/or Jimmy Team and all the fire districts do this budget. I just do, let's see what I've got. Well, and those I provide at each district. For them, $233,903 of current year taxes, 9,500 of prior year, total budget of 243,403.
Yeah, whatever the information that I have here shows the district value in '21 at 220.6 million. District value in 2022, 225.9 million. So I'm showing going up five point, right at 5.3 million. So that should be some additional revenue coming in for you already.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put a point of correction to that. I've done this a long time, and that's not exactly the way it's been done. If our value goes up 5.5 million dollars, that millage rate has been adjusted back lower to account for the 235,000, the 230,000, the 220,000 that was in the budget. So that millage rate is figured each year to provide what we requested or a flat budget if we didn't have an increase. So if it's five years and we got 219,000, we ended up with 219,000 for lots of years. If that was our budget, no increase.
I disagree with the way you're looking at that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't adjust your tax rate downward.
I think what, if I'm not mistaken, you're saying to make it revenue neutral.
We don't do that.
That the property values may be here, you still pay the same, your taxes be higher, but your millage rate would be lower.
We don't do that.
Yours is based on the millage rate.
We only do that at revow here.
At revow.
At revow.
The only time we would adjust the fire tax rates would be at revow to make revenue neutral. But other than that, we don't decrease.
Is that what you're talking about?
Well, not exactly, because it remained flat. We got the same amount of money from the county for several years running, even though there was some increase in value in that. I don't, you know, maybe the last couple of years I've been as involved in that. But in years prior, when I was, and that's been five, six years ago, it remained flat, in other words, if we had 235,000, we got 235,000 figured out.
What district are you with?
Burnington, Iowa.
You're Burnington as well, okay.
Yeah.
So last year, y'all's actual revenue collected and sent to y'all was 237, 263.
Correct.
And like I said, for the upcoming budget, we've got 243, 403 budgeted. So there is some increase there.
The other thing to change, the other thing fluctuating is that collection.
Collection percentage.
The collection rate for the year prior. So you do have some fluctuation, even if I'm looking at, I think this is 2020. District value is 216 million. So obviously, from there to the 220, that would have been about a $4 million increase. But it's showing a collection rate of 96.99%. So the collection rate was lower that year. So that, that figures in with some fluctuations in the numbers. And that may be what I'm reflecting, but that's. What is your reserve or your fund balance, Mike?
Right now, we have in savings about $35,000. Enough to operate the firehouse on three months' worth of budget. And the checking account right now is about 48, 49,000. We just paid our key risk, our working comp and all that good stuff.
And Craig, Mike, the initial bill on the Osque Creek's not 45 years old, 43 years old.
Was it 1980? 1980, the bill?
1980, it's about 30, 32, 35 years. Oh, my mistake.
And to Craig Paul, it's not on Yonk Creek, it's on Davis Creek.
Split the hair. Teach me with that area now. That's a big lick you go over that, don't you?
I understand.
That's way over the top of anybody else.
Right.
And, good presentation. I was a little relieved at the last board meeting when you got up. I was ready to go to bat with a new truck. And you said, hey, we're not asking for a tax increase.
Well, that was budgeted, I mean, that truck was raised on the current budget.
Right.
Couple of days later, I'm thinking, whoa, that's a 33% tax increase.
Right, that wasn't, that was budgeted for, if you order a new truck now, it's about a year and a half to two-year process. We ordered this, well, didn't order, we started this process May of last year. Of course, COVID hit, supply chain issues and stuff like that. It took this long to get close enough to where we could start doing the paperwork, turning it into, of course, to the bank and stuff like that. So they told us, yes, we're able to do this truck. It took them eight or nine months to be able to say that, so.
We've made some substantial investments, one being an auto pulse CPR system, which does automatic compressions. As far as I know, I think we're one of very few, if any, departments in Macon County that carry one of those devices outside of EMS. And that was, if I remember correctly, a little over $18,000.
Yes, correct.
But just given our proximity to EMS base, like Mike said, it may be 10, 15 minutes. And, you know, somebody's heart stops pumping. You know, one of these machines increase the odds of survivability greatly. And that's, that's what we looked at when making that investment, something for the community. I mean, you can't put a price tag on bringing someone back.
At your community meeting, Chief Schuler, how many people did you have?
We had four show up.
Four?
To the community.
You advertised it to them?
Sure did. I've got the Franklin Press ad right here, where it was advertising Franklin Press, social media. And also, we had signs hanging up on each fire department. And also, we do a, we call it a community service once a week. We go out and see the elderly, take them food boxes. And also, the disabled people that can't get out and stuff. We check on them and stuff. We've learned that this reduces 911 calls to their house, kind of if they get lonely or they go to the hospital, come home, something happens, they call 911. We go out, check their blood pressure, make sure they're doing okay, stuff like that. We do it once or twice a week.
Did you have any calls to object or?
No, everybody, once they, they realized that gear has a lifespan on it. Bunker gear has a lifespan, helmets, of course, the fire retardant clothes we wear, everything has a lifespan on it in the fire service, everything's ever involved. Once they learned that we operated, they thought we were a county entity where we ran off of the county budget. In other words, we were county employees, everything belonged to the county, stuff like that. And they figured out we were contractors and.
There wouldn't be no 40% added to the rate if everybody was on paper.
Right, that's exactly. Which they didn't know that the volunteer fire departments operated like that, were just contractors.
And we do get a lot of foot traffic. Our substation is also a care net distribution point, as Mike mentioned. And we go through, we distribute quite a few food boxes every week to those in need in the community.
My main goal was, when I took over as chief, is to keep the community involved in the firehouse. And we've done everything. Like I said, we go out once or twice a week. We hand out food boxes, they stop by, get their blood pressure checked. Anything we can do for the community, we do it.
Is that part-time personnel? I think that's wonderful on the weekends. Do you have, are they, are they EMT certified?
They are EMR certified.
EMR.
Yes, emergency medical responder.
But they're there Saturday and Sunday?
Yes.
How long, how much of that initial have you got left, Mike, where you have to start?
I believe we've got about $500 left of it.
Because that's one of those things, once you start, it's hard to stop.
Right, exactly.
You can't stop.
Exactly.
You've got about $500 left.
From the initial donation, yes, for the part-time help.
Questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
We need to let them, we don't have to, but we need to let.
If you're asking, there's something to put in the budget.
You're asking for a consensus. I thought we were going to vote on this next meeting, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
At our budget meeting.
Yeah, we'll have a work session. I don't think that they need to necessarily.
Sure, a little bit of my thought on this. You know, it's a little misleading, I'm not excited with Paul, but to hear you say last meeting, you're not asking for a rate increase. And I think every department in this county shares your same issues. You know, the cost of doing business has gone up in every phase of life. So has it gone up, you know, 35% of last year's budget? I think you're just a little bit out of proportion. You know, I understand. Diesel costs more money, you know, labor costs more money, but I feel like it's a little out of proportion. That's just my stance. And listen, I appreciate what you guys do. And to understand you guys operate on a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, that's impressive. But to see a 35% lick at one time, it's, it's hard for me to even.
Okay, appreciate it.
The original fire, the fire station was at the airport.
That's what I understand.
That's where the 1980s.
That's probably what I, yeah.
It was there for.
When it was established.
Yeah, had an old block building there, moved from there to Yonk Creek. So that's, yeah.
All right, guys. Derek, we've received anything in the, from the public about Burnington? Anybody, anybody else in commissioners, anything? Okay.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
We'll be having a work session, Chief Schuler, I guess we'll set that tonight. If you have a chance to reach out to some of these folks, I think that would have a great bearing. Because it ends up in, it's sort of community ones. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Coliseum Gorge, Jack and Bobby, welcome gentlemen.
Can I ask you a quick bathroom, right?
Absolutely, go ahead, Jack.
It's a little easier with my thigh and stuff.
He was one of the longest-serving employees.
Old enough to know his dad.
I remember when he was chief of police.
How many policemen did we have?
One.
How many highway patrol did we have?
One. Who was that?
H.T. Ferguson.
That, right.
I've got his signature at the house somewhere.
I'll wait on Jack, but I'll go ahead and say that's impressive that y'all have been operating on since 2008.
I'm sure you'll get into it, but my jacket's coming. How many families we have now, so to say?
We've got 25 on the fire roster and then on the rescue roster, because some of the members don't, they do EMS, they don't do fire. We've got 29.
Kane Jr.?
Uh, we've got one.
That's the key, that's the life of them.
Yes.
You have a rec on it every day now?
Days one every day, but I don't know if we get calls going off.
I don't see why there's not.
Here lately, they've been like. Our current rating's 1.05.
Thank you all.
Our current rate?
Appreciate it.
No, I'm sorry, 5.57.
Go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead, okay. For the benefit of the people who do not know who I am, I'm Jack Baird. I've been connected with Coliseum Fire Department for over 20 years. I worked for the county for 28 and a half years. Anyhow, I'm the current chairman of the board over there. I've been there for about six years or so. And as you know, when you're coming up for the board and you're asking for money, you need to come with your hat in your hand. Well, I got my hat in my hand. And we're going to ask for an increase. And three main areas we're looking at. One, we need to put in a substation. We've already purchased the land for the substation. We did get some prices on. The other thing is, it'll be, what we're asking for is a larger truck. This is a fifteen-hundred gallon truck, we're looking for a three thousand to replace it with. The other part of that is, being a stick shift, especially the younger generation, there are not many of them know how to drive a stick shift. So we're having problems getting drivers just to drive this truck. All the other newer ones are all automatic. But anyhow, and we haven't had an increase, and I know Bobby mentioned this, in our fire fee since two thousand eight was the last increase. I serve a very conservative board at the fire department. They don't like to spend money, and neither do I. So we try to keep the cost down as much as possible. Anyhow, and the last thing is, is we need to get us another paid fireman, if possible. The reason I say that, we already have a position open, and we're having problems even filling that position. We've had to increase our package. We're now offering eighteen dollars an hour plus benefits. We thought we had a guy, he'd worked for us for a few months, and Cherokee was able to outbid us and they got him. Bobby was our paid fireman for a number of years, and you guys went and hired him, so I lost him. But he's been, I got him back as chief. He's very knowledgeable in what he does. I appreciate every bit of the help that he gives me making decisions. And that being said, we are very conservative in what we try to spend. Our tax rate is one of the lowest in the counties so far. And we're asking for a penny and a half is what we're asking for. Now, that money will be used in those three areas, assuming it is there for us to be able to use. And what I mean by that is, I don't have to tell anybody in this room what the economy looks like right now. If you've been to the gas station or the grocery store, you know what it's doing. And I don't have a crystal ball. This money may actually end up being a lifeline before it's over. If that's the case, we'll have to take some of this off the table and actually spend it so we can pay our bills. But hopefully, I'm going to try to remain optimistic about this, that we're able to take the money, if you all award it to us, so that we could spend it in these areas, which would be a paid fireman, a substation, and another truck, if possible. Substation's going to serve three main areas. It'll serve L.J., Little L.J., and Mountain Grove. Hundred and sixty-eight homes is what it'll cover. It'll dramatically decrease their current premiums on insurance. I think that's something that everyone in every fire department community wants, says. They want everybody in their community to have the same exact coverage. Right now, there's two areas of ours that doesn't, and this is one of them. George Moses allowed us to buy some money at a very reasonable rate, or buy some land at a very reasonable rate in order to put this substation in. So we do have a land bought. The other area we're looking for, and if you all know anybody who can help us on this, we'd love it, is around Walnut Creek, Buck Creek. We need to put another one in in the future that would service our whole, our department area. Bobby's going to take over here, and he's going to ask after most of the particulars on it. He put most of this program together. I'm mainly just a salesman, is all I am. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Jack. As Jack said, where we're looking at this increase, the two main parts is going to be adding the three thousand gallon tanker. That's one of them, and then the other one's the full-time employee. We're looking to hope to get the rest of the money for the substation from our annual newsletter, which we've, in the past two years, as you'll see here in the packet, we've got seventy-four thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars in donations for that building. Our district, we have zero hydrants located in our district, everything. We, yet water-wise, either comes out of a lake stream, ponds, or the river. For us to, we don't have the luxury of just hooking up the hydrant when we have a fire. And like Jack said, the station on L.J. would bring a hundred and sixty-eight residents into the five-mile district.
Exactly. Is that at the old Moses home place? Is that where?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And then also, the additional revenue for the, that second paid position. We're also looking and have put out some fillers inside the station of doing a live-in fireman for nighttime response calls. They would stay there at the station. We're looking at Comberton, or in our lower building, the office there, and a bedroom, and they would stay there rent-free, and they would be responsible for responding to calls at nighttime, where we'd have someone there to get in the truck and go.
Bobby, have you considered burning down, we're talking about somebody on the weekend?
Yes. If we are able to get that second full-time person, what we're looking at doing is working twelve-hour schedule, and it'll be seven days a week. Well, but they'll be in rotation, the two paid personnel, and we'll have coverage seven days a week.
Traffic on that? Seven days a week.
We all mentioned the same thing we did last time. I'm sure that y'all are going to have a nine-point, or right out of ten million dollar increase in your property values this year. So even at your current rate, that's going to be a pretty nice additional amount of tax revenue, service fee revenue coming in.
It's only about...
Six thousand.
Yeah, it's going to take fifty-seven hundred dollars, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like a lot of value, but then if you apply their tax rates, it's about fifty-seven hundred dollars. Because like Warren said, too, you've got to look at their collection rate. That varies from year to year.
Bobby, on that tanker, you heard Mike talk about, it takes two years to get one if you order it now. So that's what, I mean, if you order it now, you're looking at a twenty-four model, probably? Or really, how does that work?
It varies depending on the truck manufacturer, too. Because some of the manufacturers have bought up chassis, and they allotted so many chassis per year as far as getting a current year.
The sooner the better, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's the bottom line.
Any other questions?
Let me ask a couple. And again, thank you guys for what you do. As Chairman Tate said, it's not like we're interrogating you, it's just a question that I feel like I need to ask. So right now, according to this spreadsheet, it shows that you, it appears that you have two full-time salary positions budgeted right now.
Yes, sir.
So what you're asking for is a third full-time position?
No, sir. It'd just be those two there on that budget sheet.
This is a budget request, or just actual?
That's the request, yes.
That's where my gray area is. Another issue that strikes me a little bit odd is the amount of money in your accounts. So, you know, typically, I like to tell people, you know, sometimes tax increases are necessary. It's like Burnin Town, the cost of living goes up, but, you know, if you combine your checkings and savings account, you have a quarter million dollars in the bank. There's two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
Seventy-four thousand of the money that is in the checking is the donations that we've got to build the substation. And then in the savings, the bank requires us to keep two loan payments in the bank at a time. So our current loan payment, I think it's around thirty-two thousand a year, so there's sixty thousand of that is just tied in.
Punish you, like, to run a business like this, you know, on the budget that you run, or punish you for doing a good job and being conservative. I just feel like I need to know where these funds are going before, you know, we keep increasing taxes to fill that savings account. So out of quarter million dollars, you're saying a hundred and thirty of that is earmarked?
Yeah.
Out of two hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and seventy? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. That's impressive. So since two thousand eight, operating off the same budget, that's pretty sharp.
It's also impressive you get forty-five people turn out to the meeting and you apparently passed a ballot and they...
Yes, sir.
Probably blind vote.
Yes.
I think that's great, Bobby. Good job.
I had one person call me that was animally against this, and I've had probably five call me there for it, so interesting. And that's about what that same percentage is.
Same five called me for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jack. All right, Franklin Fire and Rescue, Chief Foreman. Welcome back.
Good evening, Commissioner. You've got some data for your own pass. Follow along, and I'll have to remember members.
I'm going to put my eyeballs on. So with the budget we submitted, we are requesting a fire tax increase of point zero one five five. This would bring us to an even seven cents, which is still well below the average mileage rate in the county of eight cents. If we were awarded that increase, it would give us an extra two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. Where we plan for that money to go, basically, one cent of that would allow me to hire three full-time firefighters. We currently run two full-time firefighters on shift twenty-four seven. A third position would be added to each shift, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And the other remaining half cent would go towards capital purchase of fire apparatus, which I will touch on a little bit later. One of the reasons we need the additional staffing is, when I pulled the numbers from last year, we ran twenty-seven confirmed structured fires to fires not in our district. It was automatic mutual aid, which we all do. Of those fires, sixty-seven percent of the time, our truck was first or second arriving. I include second arriving because for everyone else, the normal first truck only has a driver, no firefighting personnel. So our personnel are doing the primary firefighting functions. So if we were able to get this third person, it wouldn't just be for Franklin, it would be for all of our neighbors as well. Everyone would benefit from that additional position. And when you look at just the sheer numbers, last year, we ran one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six calls for emergency response. The rest of the county averaged two hundred and ninety-two. We're running six hundred and thirty percent more calls than everybody else on average in the county. So that's another reason why we need additional staffing. It would also allow us to split crews on minor calls, medical calls. Last year, we had almost two hundred and thirty calls that overlapped, which means somebody's emergency is being delayed because we're already on one. And then I also mentioned part of the money going towards capital reserve purchases. We currently have seven apparatus at the fire department for our two stations. Of those, currently only two are NFPA compliant. The newest truck we have right now is one that Warren bought when he was the chief, and that was a few years ago. And the rest of them get older from there. So that's basically the data, the justification for our request, and I'm happy to field any questions.
Chief Foreman, I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask just for the public's perception here.
Sure.
You were governor, your oversight board is the Franklin Board of Commissioners. They're elected officials. Are they in favor of this?
Yes, sir. And we've already provided a letter signed by Mayor Horton and the town manager, or the city council.
Like I said, I just wanted to make sure.
Right. For everyone else to know, yes, they support the tax increase.
The apparatuses for the new substation, is all that covered there?
We took some of our current fleet and moved out there.
Didn't purchase anything additional?
No, sir. No, sir. What, as Chief Siller said, eighteen to twenty-four months for fire trucks, and we're currently, this year, we started kind of spec-ing and building. We need two trucks, a tanker for three thousand gallons and a new city fire apparatus as well, which would allow us to sell off two of our old ones.
How much is the town budget for the fire department? Do you know all that?
As far as what the town contributes, nothing, sir. Our entire revenue comes from county fire tax.
Just one. All right, I'm going to just mention this, just because Derek rolled into it earlier through his, about our growing county. So Burnin Town's property values are, it went up five point two six million, Coliseum is going up nine point nine, yours is going up fifty-eight point one million. Amy, I don't know, looking at both of y'all, was that taken into consideration with this new tax rate?
I didn't see that number. I didn't know what the projection was on that.
It is in the numbers I provided them. It gained them about thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand.
If they kept their tax rate the same.
I'm not saying it's going to affect our decision, I'm just making the point.
They gained thirty-four thousand dollars a year. So the spreadsheet that Warren did, he reflects that in there. He shows what the estimated fee is based on their current tax rate. Then they've got in the book, they've plugged in the seven cent on that worksheet I provide them, and that's where they get their new number, that they're saying that they need to operate off that.
Thirty-four thousand, that rate we're going, that'll be fuel. And I've also provided our fund balance amount on there for you as well, a big portion of which will be used as down payment for these two apparatus that we're trying to plan on in the future.
How many firemen now do you have?
I have six full-time working shifts, so two, every day, twenty-four seven, plus myself at forty hours.
How many total?
Oh, total, with our seven, we also have thirty volunteers, so that puts us at thirty-seven.
Any junior?
No, sir. We're, years ago, Franklin had a junior program, and we're starting to get into the paperwork to establish the five oh one C three, so that we can bring one back and start investing in our use.
That's what we need in the future.
Yes, sir. We want to give the youth something positive to do.
Questions? Thank you, Chief Foreman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Auto Fire and Rescue, Mr. Cave, welcome.
So I'm here with Colby Anderson, he's our board chairman. I'm going to keep it kind of short. Let him get that handed out to you. So we've approached the board, I think it was two thousand twenty, about new building construction to replace our forty-four-year-old station that we're operating out of right now, that is basically getting too small to fit an apparatus. It's got ten-foot garage doors, and right now, the trucks that are in it, the four trucks that we have in that station, will probably be the last ones that'll fit. We're housing the other ones at the substation, and in the newer addition that we built in two thousand three, holds our other, our new engine that we just bought the other couple, three years ago. So last year, we came to you for the increase, and I think you gave us up to a point one. We went from a point oh six eight to a point one, which was about a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. We put money that we had set aside, we had a fifteen thousand dollar little, we were able to get rid of a payment by paying off the substation. We were able to put that, fifteen with that.
So I'm here with Colby Anderson. He's our board chairman. I'm gonna keep it kind of short. Let him get that handed out to you. So we've approached the board, I think it was two thousand twenty, about new building construction to replace our forty-four-year-old station that we're operating out of right now that is basically getting too small to fit an apparatus. It's got ten-foot garage doors, and right now, the trucks that are in it, the four trucks that we have in that station, will probably be the last ones that'll fit. We're housing the other ones at the substation, and then the, the newer addition that we built in two thousand three holds our other, our new engine that we just bought the other couple, three years ago. So last year, we came to you for the increase, and I think you gave us up to a point one. We went from a point oh six eight to a point one, which was about a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. We put money that we had set aside, we had a fifteen thousand dollar little, we were able to get rid of a payment by paying off the substation. We were able to put that, fifteen with that, which gave us a total of one sixty-six. After talking with our financial institution on the building cost that we were doing an estimate on, it was five point eight originally. We've whittled that down to between four point eight and five million. And that's basically your grading, which the state is doing to free for us right now, because they're digging a lot of dirt out of our site. So that's not costing us anything on site prep. We've shrunk the amount of concrete that was, the architect had recently put in the, the apron area and the, the entrance to the, to the bay area that you see there on the drawing.
He had ten-inch concrete on everything. We reduced the driveways. Just, you had to leave the bays and the aprons ten inches, but the driveways and stuff, we went to six to cut some costs there.
But he had nineteen thousand square feet of concrete on that whole thing, which we, we don't need nineteen thousand square feet. We need an entryway coming into the back of the building, which cut out a, a large chunk of concrete. We reduced the, I think, the landscaping and hardscaping he had. And, I mean, he, he was estimating, based on projects that he had done in the past. And, I mean, I don't see fifty thousand dollars worth of landscaping, or thirty thousand worth of hardscaping. I mean, that's, that's stuff we can do ourselves. So we come to you last year for two hundred and eighty thousand. That was the payment to get what we needed from our financial institution, which is Sun Trust, used to be United Financial. They, they deal mainly with municipalities and fire departments. That's their specialty. So we had the one sixty-six, which what y'all got was last year. But after talking to a couple of different builders, we talked to the one that's doing Highlands Fire Station. He's also working on a project in the area of another fire station, I don't know what county. It's a twelve thousand square foot fire station. He says, right now, they're running three hundred and thirty-two dollars a square foot. That's their proposed, if they started building today, which put them at a twelve thousand square foot station at around four point four million, four point five. So using his estimation on our square footage, we were coming in around a little over four point eight. Mr. Tench, when I talked to him back a month ago, before the feds raised the interest rate, he said for the two eighty, we could get a thirty-year loan for five million at three point seven five percent. And he was, at that time, the interest rate was not three point seven five. He was padding that because he had seen the interest rate go up three times since the first of the year. So he was kind of padding that so that it wouldn't be accounted for basically in our, in that loan process. So what we're asking is a point zero one nine increase for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to finish out that two hundred and eighty that we need to get this project off the ground and get it started, which if we started today, it would be three or four years before it was done. And remind you, this is not a metal structure. This is not a, a red iron building. This will be a brick and mortar building, just like what Highlands is building right now. It'll be for fifty, sixty-year station. It's not a, it's not a, a station that's gonna need repaired like our current station. We built in two thousand three, and this morning, or this evening, I was watching water drip inside the window frames. The ceiling tiles, they're like, we've had it patched numerous times. I took pictures today of water running in. The old station, there's a, the trucks are stored in the basement, and we have a weight room down there for our members to use. I took pictures of water seeping through the block wall today after a thirty-minute rain, so.
And to remind the board, we do not own our current building. The community development owns it, and we've got a lease with them. And that part, we, there's no way we could really build on the site where we're at. And we've got the property, like you said, we've already purchased it about ten years ago.
It's paid for.
So this has been a long process. And I know we, last year, there was talks about cutting things. And like I said, we looked at where we could, but on the actual footprint of the building, it'd be hard to actually cut, cut anything. We've got four pull-through bays and a single bay. We currently have eight apparatuses at our station. One is in an outside storage building, so that only leaves us one free bay for future needs. I know possibly there was talk at one time, putting an ambulance on the south end, you know, and realistically, most departments here and nationwide can tell you that membership is getting harder to come by, and this will probably be a county building one day. So y'all can house ambulances there, whatever you want. I mean, I know that's hard to believe, but it's coming to that. And it's, I'd say, ten years. I mean, it's gonna be sooner than you realize.
Less than ten.
We currently have twenty-four volunteers, two paid members, and two juniors. And we do offer seven week, or seven-day-a-week coverage. It's from six in the morning to six in the evening.
They've been doing that for a year and a half, so.
Let me take off on the statement you just made. Within a ten-year period.
Less, less than ten. Five, five more, five is, is looking closer.
I mean, it, I mean, the state requirement for a department used to be twenty members, and if you had a substation, you had to have eight more. It's twenty-eight total members for pretty much every department here, because most of us have substations. The state changed that requirement to fifteen and four, so now all you have to have is nineteen. But that's, that solved the problem of fire departments going under, but it doesn't solve the problem of getting firefighters to calls. So, I mean, before, and this, that's part of this building on the backside, you notice there is living quarters, so that is an expense that is added on to this, and that is looking to the future when we have to pay for twenty-four-seven coverage. And with that, we do not have city water and sewer, so because that is living quarters, it has to be sprinkled. And we will have to put up, it's kind of like all the school has, they have a water storage and a pump out there for the sprinkler system. That is included in our cost of this building. So that's part of the five million dollars.
Kobe, have you had the septic layout?
We have, we.
Have you got a septic system?
We had that done.
We've had that done, and it's laid out.
It used to be on our department, it was a county employee.
You take a big system.
Yeah. It's on the backside of, of where the building's going.
It'll have to be a pump system.
Back to taking the bank out.
Yeah.
It'll have to be a pump system, because our, our septic drain fill is, is above where we're currently digging. So that's all been laid out. They actually laid it out twice because we had them come back and add additional drain fill to it for a larger, for, for the meeting area and the, and the live-in.
We had the septic done.
And we also have our well drilled. We've got a well drilled that's six hundred feet deep and ten gallon a minute. So we've got water within ten foot of the ground right now. But, and we do have, we, we did take, we, we do, what we've been paying our architect with is we have a building fund, a building account. And we, we converted pretty much all of our donation account that we had over into that, that fund, just to get a kickstart on funding some of these smaller projects that we could do without having to finance.
And the money you approved last year is in that fund as well. Currently, we have to think about two hundred and eighty thousand in our building fund that can go towards.
It's earmarked straight for, that's all it's earmarked for, and that's what's taking care of. Like I said, we, we drilled the well. We've, we've done other little projects that, that pertain to the architects' fees and, and things like that, that we've been trying to get a plan worked out for. So all that's sitting there. That'll be furniture, that'll be, but that'll be stuff that, I don't wanna finance a chair for thirty years. I mean, that, that's something that's, that's just not in my mind right. But, so that, that money will be used for the more, I guess what you say, the furniture, the furnishings and things like that, that, that you don't wanna put on a thirty-year financial note. And, you know, by the time we're finished with it, it, it may come in under budget. I don't know. I mean, there, there, some things have come down, some things have not. It, it just depends. I know concrete's.
Depends on the economy.
Yeah. So, any questions?
And if it miraculously comes in and lowers, you know, lowers millage rate, all we're asking for is enough payment to make the payment with the bank. That's all the money we're asking for. It's not, we're not asking for anything else. It's just to make the building payment. It's all we're asking for.
With, with that thought, I've said it for a number of years. If we're not careful, this fire department is gonna get out, I mean, this fire, and I have billed the one down on Yonk Creek, or corrected by Mr. Bill and Dave Brains. So it's an important service provided. It's, it's, we're not even questioning that, and we're not picking on anybody personally. But I cannot foresee having paid firemen full-time at every, at, what are we at, fifteen?
You'll have to. Did, did you foresee, did you foresee having paid firemen in Macon County at all ten years ago? I mean, I've been, I'm almost seventeen years as a paid fireman.
I'm talking twenty-four seven.
Yeah, but did, did you think you'd ever see a paid fireman in Macon County?
If you don't have one, it's like.
Exactly.
Burnin Town was saying they need a substation. We've got a substation, but the state says we need two more. We need one up, uh, Tassie and up one, up Mulberry. Well, you're gonna have to some, have somebody man those stations.
There will be a point of diminishing return, meaning that at some point, your millage rate and your fire tax will be greater than your savings on your insurance.
At that point, Macon County will be paying for most of the fire protection. At that point.
He's saying they just won't provide the coverage. It'll be out of the.
At, at some point, it's gonna get to the point where there's gonna have to be a county department.
But it's also not even the money return. What about, say, it was one of your family members having a heart attack there?
The play on the town and everything.
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You not want a firefighter close by to respond?
Absolutely.
So that's why I'm, that's why the county will have to pick that.
But how close do you need that fire member?
Fairly close. Especially if you're talking about the head of Mulberry, where EMS has a twenty-minute ETA at best.
I can see what will happen at some point, as opposed to every community paying full-time. Our millage rates would exceed our general fund millage rates if we try to do that. And the thing in Highlands is a disaster. That is, that's, that is, to me, that's just a, that's a monument to man up there. I cannot fathom taking that property and putting that money into that building. But at some point, it may come to a centralized fire department countywide.
It will.
It's, it's going, is, if the, if the individual.
But you will still need those buildings.
Is it, would it be smarter before investing five million dollars into another building to research and consider that? Because if we wind up with a bunch of, because if you get a five million dollar building, the next one's gonna be three million, you know, it's gonna be, we're gonna have these buildings all over the county. Is it, would it be worthwhile to stop and say, hey, and just have the conversation? Or we go, can we concentrate these fires?
It, it might be, but that's up to the county. I mean, that's, we're just here trying to provide the fire service, and this is what we need to provide.
But you're planning, you're planning for way down the road.
We're planning.
And we have to.
And you're planning that this is going to be a full-time twenty-four seven. And have you calculated what that cost would be to the average citizen in Otto if?
There you.
I mean, you're building, you're building the facility to house firemen twenty-four seven. Have you run the numbers on how many firemen that's going to be? What, what would that expense be to your, your residents in, in Otto?
That we haven't.
Before we spend this five million dollars planning for something that we don't know what's gonna cost. And I'm not picking on you, but five million dollars is a lot of money.
I, I agree.
I beat my cup back there, and all them guys are five hundred thousand.
Part of that five million dollars coming out of my family's pockets, my pocket, my dad's pocket. I mean, I've got my whole family living down there, so I know all about it coming out of their pockets.
And building the schools, I mean, y'all know how much building costs. I mean, it's not like we're coming in and saying we're five hundred dollars a square or anything. I mean, we're talking to contractors, and we're, like I said, we've got a fourteen, five, fourteen thousand five hundred square foot building. It's just, like I said, I under, I understand your concern, but.
On the thirty-two hundred letters that you sent out, you said you had two that opposed? And did you, how many of those that came, did the rest of them, what kind of response did you get from the thirty-two hundred letters?
We, we got back mostly emails, and I printed them off, but I've left them at the firehouse. But we got about sixty responses back out of those three thousand letters. We got about, I don't know, a hundred and fifty or, or something like that. They were undeliverable. And we got those, we got our addresses from the county, the tax office, and so I don't know what happened there. But we had the two, the two negative responses. One was mad because he had to pay a fire tax on his vehicle. He had nothing to do with the building. He just didn't wanna pay fire tax on his vehicle. And the other one was just, you know, at the time, two thousand twenty, with COVID, she just, you know, like y'all said, wasn't just a good, wasn't a good time to, to do an increase like that. But most of the others were supportive. We done a public meeting last year, and everybody was supportive at that, which, I think we had, what, five or six people? This year, we run another public meeting, and I have the press release here signed. We had that for an hour, and we had nobody show up, and we received no emails. We ran it on social media with a, a dedicated email address for concerns and comments, and so far, I've received nothing on that email.
I'm fearful I could take a liberty of approaching Paul, because I'm fearful that a lot of the communities, because our volunteer firefighters have done such a great job over the years, that a lot of the communities have sort of taken it for granted. I'm sorry to say that, but I think that's true, that, and it's not taking, your boys is training. I mean, I, I read the report that what you have to do now to even train and to get volunteers for anything, so still the best deal we got going in this county by far.
Where we had forty volunteers, what?
When I joined in oh six, we had forty-two regular firefighters and I think six juniors.
And now we're down to twenty, twenty-three regular and, and two juniors.
And your call volume has not decreased.
Four hundred and sixty-eight for the past two years. Been over four hundred since two thousand sixteen, and we're already over two hundred now.
I don't know how many of these juniors have ever been in your current firehouse. Haven't been there quite a bit. They need to take trips.
It'd be, it'd be opening.
They need to take a, take a look.
Question. I know y'all got one of these, which I thought was fascinating. This gave us some information to basically ask comparison of line items, of which y'all have budgeted the gas, telephone, whatever. Can you tell me why your operating supplies are so much drastically higher than anyone else's in the county?
Well, since we, this is the sheet that I normally use with my breakdown, and, and the, the form that she provides us, I try to make my numbers fit her form, which I do that somewhat. But what's your, what's your accounting for in that operating, which I knew that would come up, because I seen how ours was way up. So I've got, let's see, I've actually got five line items in that one operating budget. So my fire equipment and supplies, which is thirty-two thousand dollars, rescue equipment, first responder equipment, radio equipment, and fire prevention, and there was one more, I think, supplies, which is just station supplies, for like food and drinks, for the stuff that we provide for calls and things like that. So I've got all five of those lumped into one. That includes my turnout gear, because I know on there, she says turnout gear.
I have a thousand dollars budget.
That's my uniform budget is a thousand dollars. So my, my, my fire equipment is where my turnout gear and, and all my hose, my, everything comes from.
Sure.
And my rescue equipment, that's my jaws. That's, that's all the stuff for that. So it's, it's, I guess it's more or less, I probably categorize my stuff a little different than Burnin Town categorizes theirs in their budget on, on those sheets.
Has fire equipment, like everything else in the world, just keeps going up, up, up?
I need, I need to buy eight air packs. We, we need eight. We got some, they're out of NFPA, and we've been trying, we can't get, we're like Burnin Town, we can't get the grants because our budget's been too high. So, but.
That is one thing with the money from last year, where we didn't spend it. It's knocked us out of pretty much every grant possible because they show we have that much money in savings. So this year, we have not qualified for a single grant.
If I buy an air pack, if I buy an air pack with two bottles and a face mask, right now, it is pushing close to ten thousand dollars.
The main question is, how's the chief?
He's, he's getting along pretty good. He's out and about and, and getting better. He's got a few more doctor's appointments, I think, checkups and whatnot. And then I guess they'll determine his release date or what he's gonna be allowed to return to, or we're kinda waiting to see.
Can we ask about?
We will.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all. Thank you all for being here. Budget amendments, three, two-nine-seven-two-three-zero-four.
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Got a motion to approve, Commission of Bill. A motion for a commissioner bill. We have a second, Michael Commissioner Shields. I haven't seen him yet either, so can you tell us what they're on?
They were in the email mics and y'all. The quick rundown, most of them are just insurance settlements right here at the end of the fiscal year. We've had accidents that were our fault, other people's faults, so it's to appropriate those insurance funds so we can get the vehicles repaired. A DSS got some additional light funds that we had, have to disperse by May thirty-first, which is next week. The two biggies are a million, six hundred thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, transferring that from the general fund to the Macon Middle School locker room project, which will give that project two million, six hundred and forty thousand for construction of that locker room, and that is funded by sales tax, you know, we budgeted sales tax very conservatively, but even if we had no growth for the last four months, that we'll be collecting, you know, from last year's numbers, we're in, we're about one point six four million over budget. And then the other biggie is the Nana Hala Library Community Building, transferring five hundred thousand from the general fund to the building fund for Nana Hala Community Building slash library. And that one is funded from current year taxes. At the moment, current year taxes collected are five hundred and eighty-three thousand above budget. So both of those are covered by revenue. And it will, you know, fund Nana Hala to get that project moving along and, you know, create the money for Macon Middle School Locker Room, because Course Novus is working on that, we've paid them a couple of invoices, they're, they're moving right along on that, and hopefully that'll go up to bits soon.
Otherwise, it's just like we were discussing during the presentation, that money's going to roll out.
It's going to roll in the fund balance, yeah.
Fund balance, do we take out fund balance?
Yeah.
So this is around balance, if that's fine.
This is a preference.
She was saying on taxes collected, last year, in fiscal year twenty-two, we budgeted fifty million growth in tax base. That way, she said that was under budget, so next year, we've adjusted to a hundred and ten million growth, so, Michael was saying, you know, it's all, all depending on what happens, but.
Which little mom should put it in.
That's it.
Is there a time date on the Nana Hala project?
No, right now we're waiting to hear back from the architect. I think he was supposed to get back with Jack by the end of May, so we'll probably have an update on that at the June meeting. And I think the liaison committee, Josh, Mr. Shield, we need to probably set up a meeting with Dr. Baldwin to discuss that locker room project, and I think we're going to be getting something back from architect at the end of May on that.
Any further questions, all in favor? All right, discussion regarding scheduling the budget work sessions?
Next week is tough to me.
Public hearings on June fourteenth, so.
Can you do a week from today, Paul?
Pardon?
A week from today?
June second, we got the following week two.
Yeah, let's, let's, just for giggles, let's jump to the.
Nine. June, June seventh, June ninth.
Is one a neth? We need to meet every day on this.
We don't have any questions, we have a guess. June seventh, Tuesday, June seventh?
June the seventh is on.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, it's good for me.
What time?
And I'm just one, Adamini.
Good for me.
You good?
What time?
June the seventh.
What time, you want to meet in the early afternoon, make it a long one in case?
Don't matter to me.
Five P.M.?
Five, five.
Five P.M.?
It's good.
Okay.
And the public hearing will be on the fourteenth?
Yeah, so if we need to have another meeting, we'll have.
Slip it in.
We can have time for another one.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, can we, let's see. Item five A, appointment, Travis Brooks has resigned from the Highlands TDC. I'm recommending Kay Craig assume his position, she owns the Ugly Dog Pub. This will be assuming this, the position of the food and beverage business representative. I was happy to find someone.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion, Michael Commissioner Bill, second, Michael Commissioner Higdon, all in favor?